That could potentially help us regain our recycle routes at some point. You know, because we could add an additional can somewhere in the near future that could be specific for recycling. Most of the videos I've watched on these trucks and any other automatic trucks, you'll see them come up. There'll be two cans sitting in front of the house, they pick one up, move on. And that's because the second can was marked for recycling.
So eventually, because of efficiency, we might be able to do recycle and trash for the same amount of work we did for just trash?
Correct. Potential is a... Another note, when we talked in the meeting, there's going to be a real education process with the community on this. And this is going to take quite a bit of time as far as where they're going to have to put that can. This is nice that you got the eight and a half foot reach, so, but, you know, they can't put them behind the car, of course, the parked car. And they can't put them ten or fifteen feet off the street. You're going to have to get them where we can get to them. And also, we're probably looking at phasing this in by ward. I don't think we're going to turn the whole channel on at once. I think if that's just...
Well, I'm not sure because of the distribution effort that we're going to have to put in.
Yeah.
To help bring somebody else in to help us distribute the cans.
Right.
It might, doing it by ward may not be feasible. We may end up having to distribute the cans and start working them as we can.
Yeah, I can see...
As the training...
I think we talked like Ward one and two are probably going to be the easiest ones to start with, possibly three, then four, something like that. But this is not anything that we're totally deciding.
No, and that's just some of the discussion that we had in our meeting, as you mentioned. Some of the narrower streets, these trucks like this will still be able to pick up and get through those cans fairly easily. And reach between parked cars. One of the things with these cans is, like you said, placement. Cans sitting in the right direction and sitting in the right place that we can get to it. They can be placed on a slope or in a ditch or anything. They do have to be sitting on a level surface.
Bill, part of our discussion during that meeting too, if I remember correctly, when we talked about the cars parked on the curb. The cans in those kinds of situations, instead of being up on the curb, maybe you'd be in the gutters.
Most places, I'm thinking, as I'm talking with other, in the industry, and this gentleman in Hannibal was very informative with that. The placement of the cans has to be either right at the edge of the street, in the edge of the driveway, or on the curb, in the curb, I should say, on the street surface. Not at the back of the curb or up in the yard, because they have to be where we can get to them. With an eight and a half foot reach, if there would be a car parked there, this can placed with the curb behind it in the street, we could still reach it. If it sets up on the curb, we wouldn't be able to reach it. The driver would have to stop, get out, move the can to where he could reach it. Well, that's, the primary goal of this is to keep the driver from having to handle it as much as possible.
Jumping in and out of the truck.
And in and out of the truck.
For that reason, it seems to me that it might be worth mentioning that it might be good to look at where the heaviest amount of work is. Look at deciding where to start based on that, how much, which is the heavier. Which place has the most amount of stops, the heavier amount of drag.
You're saying which ward was most traction, you thought?
No. Well, more towards that hammer stops, just saying.
And we also talk about additional trash that will not go in can. So if somebody has an old bicycle or something they want to get rid of...
Couches, chairs, mattresses are all common items that we find curbside now that we will have to at some time as a committee address. And figure out just how we're going to handle it. An additional cans, because there's already been mentioned that this can may not be big enough for some households. There may, and we'll just have to figure out exactly what we want to do in that situation.
Is that something, I mean, maybe now is not the right time to ask the question, but as far as like the commercial route that will always have to use the other type truck? Would there be like, you could schedule a certain number of those types of stops? Would they have room in their day to do something like that?
These cans are completely usable in any of the commercial stops that are doing cans.
I'm talking about like the mattress, the sofa. Does the commercial route right now?
Oh, as a bulk pickup.
Would they have time to maybe pick up a few, you know, schedule some things in?
That's some of the discussion we'll have to have and figure out because, you know, we just haven't laid into that so much.
Yeah, it's a little early, that question.
Yeah.
They have to set up a process for a special pickup where a person's going to have to call and say, "Look, I've got a large pickup issue today." And this truck is not going to be, people aren't going to be able to manually throw a mattress up there and pop it in.
Not going to have to use the old back. And even though you might be able to think it would be able to pick it up, I can't stand the couch on end and grab it and throw it up in.
Yeah, we're going to have to go back to the old trucks with the rear loader.
Correct. If we're going to do a big...
It's a commercial, so they're going to have to roll out.
Larger. There's been, as we talked in our meeting, there's been discussion of a roll-off container in another location where those larger items could be brought to.
Yeah.
Yes, just take it.
So, it's, that's just some of the things that my staff and the committee will have to get some of those questions answered as we go.
The other truck, you know, we talked in the meeting about down the road, maybe a year or two down the road, purchasing the Heil and that being used for commercial pickup.
Correct.
Where you've got the four, six, eight yard dumpsters and whatever you use. So, that's a, that's something that down the road, looking at the commercial pickup side, that we would like to possibly entertain purchasing one of those. But the cost of that machine was, was it four hundred and forty?
In the four twenty, four forty range with the optional Corrado can that was sort of...
The Heil truck was about four hundred and twenty thousand dollars. These trucks are a little over two seventy-five. So, we're going to get two of them for about five fifty.
The Heil truck is more versatile because it can do, move into the commercial where these are strictly for residential.
Yeah.
But these trucks are much more maneuverable in in and out of the neighborhoods.
The other thing we talked about was the purchase of the cans. And these cans are, we have that on the agenda for tonight. They run sixty-seven dollars a piece, plus there's a fee for distributing and putting them together.
Yeah.
So, we'll, the committee kind of discussed how we're going to, what we're going to do about that cost. Are we going to pass that cost on to the residents or what we're going to do? We didn't really make a decision on that. That's something we'll just have to look at the dollars and the budget. But it is a significant cost, three hundred and twenty-seven thousand, seven hundred and forty-five dollars for the cans.
For the cans, not for the distribution costs.
Right. And that's not distributed.
That's not distributed.
For another thirty-some thousand for them to actually put the cans together and distribute them to all the homeowners.
Correct. And they would want to do that all in one motion and not, you know, not by ward. Because they're going to be coming out from another state, the distribution company that offered their services is from a distance away.
We also talked about still purchasing the tippers for the existing trucks. So, to get the guys not to have to manhandle these bags of trash and cans and all that, so...
And if we would have a...
The wards that were not have started up yet will be using them.
Yeah.
We should still be using those.
Yeah, yeah.
Still be using that can.
So, who wants to use the can then to recycle?
Yeah, right, right, right.
The tippers are just a small attachment that allows this can be dumped into our existing trucks.
To the rear trucks.
Into the rear trucks.
Well, if they're distributing all of the cans around town, what's the purpose of not using the new truck?
There wouldn't be other than just getting them, our personnel trained and...
So, how many of these trucks would you need to do all residential with these trucks?
Two would do all residential.
So, these two will be used all the time?
Yes.
Just for...
And then the other trucks would fill in or help out on days when they were running behind.
Right, yeah.
Because getting our personnel trained is, it can be a little bit of a curve. But I think these steps are easy to learn and to pick up. It's just a matter of picking up the efficiency and the speed.
Did you or any of the people with you that went to him, will get to kind of play around with it at all?
We did, we operated it for about an hour.
And you didn't, you felt like it was...
Yeah, we thought it would be fairly easy to catch on, to get real efficient and fast with it. Takes a little muscle memory. It's just a matter of learning how to operation and committing it to memory and getting it to where it's, your hand is just doing it without even thinking about it.
I think you made this pretty easy.
Yeah. Well, JD might have some more, you know, when he goes into the board. The only other thing I had, unless somebody else was there, which we did discuss the wages, the CDL driver raised the problems we had of acquiring those people and retaining them and so forth. So, we are going to plan another meeting before the next council meeting, maybe in fifteen, to further address that. I hope JD pulls some numbers together. But that's a whole other issue is retaining, hiring and retaining CDL drivers right now.
Yeah.
But we're hoping that, you know, if you put a man in this truck and he's not jumping in and out of it a hundred times a day, you can get the wages up a little bit. But it's going to be a situation where it may be a little more enticing for somebody to take that job.
For more climate control with the environment?
Yeah.
Inside the truck?
You don't have to handle everybody's stinky trash.
Right.
Put it right up against you to get it into the truck.
Yes. How soon can we get these, maybe you already said it, I'm sorry?
Do you remember what he said exactly? Somewhere in that eight to ten weeks, so...
I think realistically, October, mid-October.
But the cans were somewhere in that same timeframe.
Right. So...
Maybe by October, maybe November.
First in November, practically.
Would they help with the route planning like the last company did as well since it's a one-sided, a one-sided pickup?
The, they don't offer the same technology that Heil did for the route planning. It's not part of their baggage. We're looking into doing truck tracking for our other trucks, what we can adapt to it, and these trucks have that same capability. So, we can at least have GPS on the trucks so we know where the trucks are going. But, no, this company didn't offer that technology to help us with route planning.
It's only fair to mention that these trucks cannot be used on every street in town. And the ones that come immediately to mind are cul-de-sacs. The truck cannot make the bend there and put itself in the proper position to get all of the cans perhaps in a cul-de-sac. So, there may be some areas...
It can.
Can it?
Just, even with the thirty-one yard truck and tandem axle.
Great.
It was still maneuverable enough on that freightliner chassis to, one of the other videos they showed with the tandem axle. They just have them going right through a cul-de-sac. Now, they did have to make one little jack leg and still to get back around, but they did pick up four houses in a cul-de-sac.
That's great, awesome.
So, with minor adjustments, like we talked about maybe making sure people are parked on the lawn, you know? Do you anticipate that there would be any place in Marshall that should be...
I think with some planning and working through some issues, because we're going to find issues as we go along. I'm sure there's going to be some pickups that we find. And it's just a matter of learning how to make these trucks do the job we need them to do.
That's all my reporting. If anybody's got anything to add or if you have more questions for Bill.
I'd like to add just one thing for all the council persons here. We need to, each one of you, educate your citizens within your wards as you can. All the citizens that are here tonight, if any of you've got any questions at this time, this is going to be an educational process for the entire city. Because we're starting something that's totally new. And it's going to be tough, going to be tough on Bill's department especially to get it lined out, get it scheduled, and make it work. But we need everybody in the city to cooperate and help us. And each one of you that can speak to your wards and ask that help from our citizens, it needs to be done any chance you get, and would be greatly appreciated.
Shelby, can I put that video later?
Right now, because we have the personnel to stack the truck with two, even though it only takes one driver, maybe the extra person for a time to go and reposition the can.
Our plan was train four drivers simultaneously, even though we're only getting the two trucks.
So, maybe maybe rotate that position.
They can rotate in and out, that way we have more than one driver that's familiar. Because if that man wants to take a vacation day or he calls in sick one day, I got to have somebody that can be able to step into that position, so...
If you're while we're all worried about how to put the trash can right there on first and third streets.
Seasonal issue, you know, proper, say, the snow, clear streets and puddle snow up on the curb. That's a big adjustment.
Yeah, all those are issues, you know, with snow plowing and trash has always been a...
That's where you have to do a street service.
It's going to have to be on the street. Maybe at the end of the driveway, because there's only a clean area in the driveway.
Yeah.
Or just the edge of the driveway.
If we get a big heavy snow, and we cancel trash, that would just have to be pulled back and serviced whenever we can get back to it. But that, that's only a few days a year that that ever happens. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill, thank you, Danny. Move on to our property finance, budget, and audit committee. Mr. Thompson?
I don't have much tonight, but Amy and JD have been working on the budget. I know they're going to do a review, kind of take a first cut, first glance at it. And then late next week or early the following, we'll set a committee meeting, meet with JD and Amy, go over the budget and start reviewing with the department heads of their want list. So, that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson. City administrators' report, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I've got a couple of points to follow up on regarding the purchase of these trucks and these cans. But before I get into that, the clerk has reminded me to mention that the public hearing for the tax levy will be on August the fifteenth at our next regular meeting at 6:00 PM. That's the public hearing to set the tax levy for the city of Marshall on August fifteenth at 6:00 PM. I want to jump in real quick to a couple of things that led, there was a couple of questions that came up in the last report that I think I can answer a little bit. And so, let me start with a little bit of background. When we started down this path and we all became concerned about the lack of drivers, I think the consensus was that automation was going to be the key. And I feel like the council all really was on board with that, that, you know, trash collection has been the same for the last fifty years. And that while we're in the middle of this labor shortage, that we've got to find a way to get more productivity out of every employee that we do retain. And that the way to do that was through automation. So, I appreciate the support that we've had from the municipal services committee and from the council at large with regard to that. Now, some of the, what you saw in the last meeting with regard to that Heil truck, that was a very sophisticated piece of machinery. And as Bill said, that's really the future of trash collection. The reason why we're moving forward today with these Pack Tech trucks versus the Armor trucks. While we were talking to that salesman, the big concern that arose was the twenty-four month turnaround delivery time for those trucks. And I think we were all afraid that we'd be underwater in twenty-four months if we didn't do something to automate and to try to increase the productivity of our drivers. And in reaching out to just colleagues and stuff around the state, this company in Minnesota, Pack Tech, came up. And a number of people indicated, hey, these guys, they primarily make concrete trucks, I suppose, but they also are in the trash business. And that, we come to find out Hannibal had some operating around there, I think Aurora, Monet, Missouri, Monet, Missouri, had some. So, there were some in the state. But as Bill said, these are a little bit less sophisticated, they're a little bit smaller, they're not as heavy on technology. The lowrider truck that we were talking about at the last meeting has got a heads-up display similar to an attack helicopter that the driver sees. So, he never has to take his eyes off the front of the, of the truck. And I do foresee us with the council's cooperation going to that technology. But i-if we were to invest in that today, we're not going to be able to deploy that technology until 2024. So, what these Pack Tech trucks do for the price of, a little bit more than the price of one of those Heil trucks, we can get these two freightliner chassis with a three-month delivery time versus a two-year delivery time. Bill mentioned the freightliner chassis, that is attractive because they do stock a lot of those parts and they're familiar with them. To kind of give you some idea of how this thing is going to roll out, the trucks and the toders should arrive within a week or two of each other in mid-October. Now, that's, that's, that's what the Pack Tech manufacturer is telling us, and that's what the salesman associated with Armor on the toders is telling us. And what we want to do is, in the meantime, between today and October, is really utilize the website and the Facebook page, radio, newspaper, and really educate people on what's involved here. And we've got the technology, and I've been working with Shelby Dawson and House to create some brief videos about where these toders need to be placed. Why there's, why they can't be placed in certain areas or up on the curb, for example. So, we're going to make a real effort, and that was something the committee really emphasized to me, was that we really need to make an effort to educate the public and to get that information in front of them in a format that's easy for them to digest at their convenience, so... And we mentioned this delivery and distribution company. So, when these toders come on these trucks, and is it six truckloads, Bill?
Eight.
Six trucks, so we're going to have six semi-loads of these things in, oh, I'm sorry, eight, eight semi-loads in. So, they're going to have to, these things have to be assembled, the bar, the lid, the wheels. So, this company, what they do is they, they'll come in, they'll assemble these cans, and then they will distribute them for us around town. And part of the scope that we're going to negotiate with them is hanging on these cans, some flyers, some basic instructions, something that they can, that the citizens can come up with that hopefully won't just get dropped in the can right away, that if they take a look at it, it'll just reiterate the information that we're putting out there already about where to place these cans and why. One of the things that came up during the committee discussion was to possibly have this company mark with an X on the street where an ideal location is to place the can. And that was something that we hadn't thought of that I think is worth exploring. So, we're going to look at that when we negotiate the scope. And I'll talk a little bit about that contract here as we move through the timeline. So, as we mentioned, these, I think there was a question about why distribute the cans if we're not going to run the trucks yet. We do want to get those cans out on the street and get that part of the contract closed. Because the distribution of forty-eight hundred cans is going to be somewhat complex. And we need to make sure that they're all accounted for, that everybody's received what they were supposed to receive. And then we really just want to get the customers, the residents, used to the operation of these cans and putting them in and out and deal with phone calls and questions and things like that. While at the same time, Bill is training his drivers on those trucks, on the use of the arm and things like that. So, with regard to the implementation, I really don't think you're going to see whether we do it by wards or neighborhoods. I think the ward approach is probably pretty sound. And we pick kind of the low-hanging fruit in the sense that these would be the less problematic streets, not the very narrow streets where there's a lot of on-street parking. I really think that based, if everything goes correctly on the delivery timeline, the soonest that you would see one of our drivers out operating that new truck would probably be the middle to the end of November or December at the earliest. I think that's probably the most reasonable expectation with regard to distribution of the totes and then training on the new trucks, so... Now, this next municipal services committee meeting that we're going to have, there's a couple of things that the committee's asked me to come back with. And I'm sure a couple of you have questions about these, it got touched on during Councilman Brand's report. The tippers, we were initially talking about buying ten tippers, now we're talking about buying six to outfit the rearload trucks that we're going to retain. We should have that quote this week, the revised quote for the six tippers, we'll have that for the committee. We're also going to have a recommendation for the CDL drivers' wages. And we're going to take the cost of the truck and the totes, I'm sorry, the two trucks and the totes and the possible wage increase and look at what is going to be the impact, not only to the budget with regard to the wages, but what's going to be the impact of the prior year's funds? That two and a half million that you've got sitting in reserve? Because if we want to order this lowrider Heil truck and this Corrado can, we're looking at a, you know, it's probably going to be around a half a million dollar purchase. That and a backup Corrado can and that sort of thing. So, I think what we're going to, at least in discussions with the committee, what we're going to want to do is set ourselves up that if we spend, you know, we're looking at spending about nine hundred thousand, you know, or more in this fiscal year. How then do we build those reserves back up so that you've got some flexibility down the line when you want to start expanding the automation into the commercial area? And the one thing that the committee was adamant about in their directive to me with regard to recommendations that the citizens should know is that they want to find a structure on the rates that keeps our head above water without unduly burdening the residents. And so, that will be a critical discussion at that next meeting, based on these numbers that we've got for purchases today and what we anticipate spending for the truck in 2024 when we take delivery, and how do we rebuild those reserve funds in the interim? The other thing that we need to discuss at that meeting are the bulk pickups, and that's no small issue. Everyone in town is used to being able to put bulk items out right now. And I think one of the things that came up when we were looking at contract services were a lot of people were fearful that they didn't want to go backwards and lose that service. So, we're going to need to look at how we can utilize the local forces that we have with the rear-loading trucks, kind of like you discussed a moment ago, to accomplish bulk pickup, whether that be once a month or something more frequent. So, that'll also be at that next committee meeting. For the next council meeting then, what I anticipate having for you is a contract for the purchase of the tippers. The contract for the assembly and the distribution of the cans, and any educational material and things like that. And then hopefully at that point, then the committee will be prepared to talk about recommendation on CDL driver wages. Any fee increases on trash that may need to occur over the next two to three years. And what the proposed first phase might look like of this automated rollout in November. A couple of notes, I just really want to reiterate that to the citizens that we are not, these cans are not just going to show up on your driveway next week. We are anticipating a October deadline. And during the intervening weeks, we hope to reach out to you with a great deal of educational material and get you as familiar as possible with kind of what our expectations are. So that, we know everybody wants to be cooperative with the placement of these cans, so... And again, even come October and November, we will not be using the automated trucks throughout town. So, people need to understand that while we phase that process in, we're all going to be learning. Citizens are going to be learning, the drivers are going to be learning, and we are, we're going to anticipate feedback from you about what's working and what's not working. And then finally, we, there's been a lot of questions, whenever we talk about residential, somebody always says, "Well, what about commercial? What are you going to do about commercial?" I don't anticipate any real changes to the commercial pickup until 2024 when we take delivery of that lowrider truck. We're going to have to keep doing that the way we're doing it today. So, commercial accounts shouldn't anticipate any changes for at least the next twenty-four months or so. And again, I think the other question that resonates with people is what about my rates? What about my trash rates? We've been able to keep trash rates really, really low as compared to most every other city in town that's either contracted or contracted their waste hauling or doing their own waste hauling. And the council's been adamant that they want to do that. But I think everybody understands, we're going to have to build in some increases in order to ensure that we can pay and retain drivers and that we can invest in some of this automation. So, it'll be my responsibility to bring recommendations to the committee and to the council that you all can digest and turn over and deliberate on and hopefully come up with a compromise that works for everybody. So, that's all I have. I'm happy to answer any questions at this point if you think there's anything we haven't covered.
Did, was there any conversation about doing some kind of deposit or something for the cans?
There was, I mean, yeah. We haven't really finalized exactly what we want to do. We want to have a small monthly fee for a period of time to pay for all our parts of the can. And this is all just kind of discussed, I think, but we haven't really, it's an option. And when we start looking at numbers, we may do something that we have to do.
Yeah, and I think too, the, because these trucks lack, some of the points a salesman made the other day, and it may have gotten missed in the presentation, but like that lowrider truck and those cans are so sophisticated that the truck and the cans, it can tell you where that can is. Some of them have got geo-tracking devices on them, some of them just have codes on them, but it can tell you if the can's out or if it's not at the curb, if it is at the curb... curb. They can create a database for us of what cans were assigned to whom. So, I think that's going to be part of the discussion that we have on the contract with the distribution company that's going to hand these out, is finding out at that point, once we have a database of who's received cans, is do we want to create a deposit scenario to help account for those toders?
Yeah, I can just see these cans walking away like the recycled containers, you know, they're all over the place, and I can see the cans kind of doing the same thing, so.
But under this automation, trash will only be picked up if it's in one of those. So, if a person loses their can, trash is going to be picked up because the arms are not going to pick up anything except that can.
Correct. Eventually, we're going to have to go strictly to this can. Now, that's something for the committee to discuss in more detail, that if we phase this in, do we want to ease into it in the other wards or not? But ideally, and this is one of the reasons too for getting these cans out early, we really want residents to utilize these cans exclusively. I know in talking to municipalities in Kansas City and St. Louis area and some of the towns in outstate Missouri, some of the, a lot of the big haulers, like your GFLs and stuff, in certain areas, they will not pick up your can if there's other, they won't pick up other trash. But if something's leaning against your can, sometimes they won't pick that up. The other thing is if your can's open and there's trash heaping out of it, they won't pick it up. So, there's going to need to be a grace period here for, to some extent. But yeah, we need to all kind of get on the same page with can, all the trash in the can and the can lid shut.
One thing too, if the entire city is going to get those cans, and we're only going to start off with more than one or two, how are the trucks that are not equipped with these arms going to pick up those cans?
Bill, you want to talk about the tippers? The tippers, yeah, please.
Yes. Okay. That's exactly the reason that we're adding the...
You'll come to the mic so they can hear you on the stream. Thanks.
Sorry, boys are going to have muscle.
Right, yeah.
No, that's the exact reason that we're adding the tippers to our existing rear-load trucks, because they will be able to handle these. It gives us an option away if there's, for some reason, a truck will be down.
And that's what that bar is down there, Bill?
Correct. The bar isn't utilized with the automatic trucks, the side loaders, but it is for the tippers. That's it. Thank you.
If there's no other questions for me, that's all I have, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Before we go any further, anybody have any more questions about this? Like I said earlier, it's going to be an educational process for our entire city, so anybody got any questions tonight, we'll gladly try to handle them. For my report mainly, I'd just like to say thanks to Bill and J.D. for all the work they have put in investigating this, the committee for getting together and bringing this information to you tonight. They will be meeting again. All councilmen, please, any questions you have for them, please visit with them so that the next committee meeting can progress. Also like to remind everybody, tomorrow, August 2nd, is voting day. We have a number of vacancies in the county. Please get out and do your diligence and vote. Move on to our resolutions, if there's no other questions about the reports, councilman. Ms. Lewis, would you read our resolution number one by title only, please?
A resolution of the City of Marshall, Missouri, authorizing the mayor and director of municipal services to accept the quote of Pactech for the purchase of two Pactech Packer trucks for use by the municipal services department.
I'd entertain a motion and a second from the council, please.
I'd move that we approve the resolution.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve resolution number one. Could I get a roll call, please, Ms. Lewis?
Ashford.
Yes.
Guthrie.
Yes.
Craig Thompson.
Yes.
Brandt.
Yes.
Benitez.
Yes.
Leon Thompson.
Yes.
Reader.
Yes.
Green.
Yes.
Could I get a resolution number two read by title only, Ms. Lewis, please?
A resolution authorizing the mayor to execute a correction deed for certain property conveyed by the City of Marshall near South Brunswick Avenue.
I'd ask for a motion and a second to approve, please.
Moved to approve, Your Honor.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve. Ms. Lewis, could I get a roll call, please?
Guthrie.
Yes.
Craig Thompson.
Yes.
Brandt.
Yes.
Benitez.
Yes.
Leon Thompson.
Yes.
Reader.
Yes.
Green.
Yes.
Ashford.
Yes.
Ms. Lewis, could I get you to read resolution number three by title only, please?
A resolution of the City of Marshall, Missouri, authorizing the mayor and director of the, excuse me, of municipal services to accept the quote of armor equipment for the purchase of toter carts for use by the municipal services department.
I'd ask for a motion and a second to approve, please.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve. Could I get a roll call, please, Ms. Lewis?
Craig Thompson.
Yes.
Brandt.
Yes.
Benitez.
Yes.
Leon Thompson.
Yes.
Reader.
Yes.
Green.
Yes.
Ashford.
Yes.
Guthrie.
Yes.
Moving on to our ordinances, Ms. Lewis, could I get you to read ordinance number one by title only, please?
An ordinance amending the zoning ordinance of the City of Marshall, Missouri by changing the zoning classification of certain property from R1 single-family district to R2 residential district.
This is a second reading of this ordinance, I would ask for a motion and a second, please.
Moved to approve the second reading.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Could I get a roll call, Ms. Lewis?
Reader.
Yes.
Green.
Yes.
Ashford.
Yes.
Guthrie.
Yes.
Craig Thompson.
Yes.
Brandt.
Yes.
Benitez.
Yes.
Leon Thompson.
Yes.
Could I get ordinance number two read by title only, please, Ms. Lewis?
An ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor of the City of Marshall, Missouri to execute a contract between the City of Marshall, Missouri and Ricketts Farm Service of Marshall, Inc., for the transfer of certain real property in the City of Marshall.
This is also a second reading. I'd ask for a motion and a second to approve, please.
Moved to approve.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve. Could I get a roll call, Ms. Lewis?
Guthrie.
Yes.
Craig Thompson.
Yes.
Brandt.
Yes.
Benitez.
Yes.
Leon Thompson.
Yes.
Reader.
Yes.
Green.
Yes.
Ashford.
Yes.
Ms. Lewis, could I get you to read ordinance number three by title only, please?
An ordinance approving and adopting the electric rate schedule approved by the City of Marshall's Board of Public Works.
Mr. Burksden, please.
Good evening. You'll notice a change in language to our electric rate schedule. That change is outweighed to demand. Demand is allocated by the pool through a six coincident peak. That change was made last year. We currently bill on one coincident peak. So, the language change is meant to match how we're billed on wholesale level to not only bill, we've got four summer month periods, which the demand is calculated in those four months. Currently, it's billed in the month that we have, or had a single CP. Now, it's going to be billed on four summer months wholesale. So, this change, and then based off that, the ration, there's an 80% ration that is calculated off that to make sure that the capacity that the customer demands will recuperate that through 12 months and not trying to get it off one. So, this change matches how we're being billed currently. It's four summer months and two winter months, which is what's called a six coincident peak. And that's done at the pool level because we have 35 cities in the pool. The combined peak is about 525 megawatts to supply power for 35 cities. Our peak here in Marshall is about 37 of that 5.5. So, the six CP is kind of how our portion of that is allocated to Marshall, our portion of those costs. So, we kind of pass, we want to bill our customers the same way we're billing. So, that's what this language change would do.
Is there any change to the rate then itself or just the billing?
No, the actual rate, it's just how the demand is calculated. That will have a small effect on some customers, not very big at all, and it probably won't happen. We propose this goes into effect after October 1st. So, it really depends on how their main summer months turn out. So, I mean, we could look at what effect it would have based on last year's summer peaks, but since we don't know what this summer season peaks are going to be, we don't know. You know, there's a big change somewhere, sometimes that happens, but what we've seen is a pretty small effect.
Do you have a little bit more specific, I mean, not an exact number, but some kind of range of not very much, like...
It'd be probably 3% or 4%, Tony, I think, is some of the ones we looked at.
I don't mean to put you on the spot, but just...
Yeah, no, no, that's fine. I mean, we've looked at...
I looked at one customer, actually the Martin Center. Their peak last year was, the pool hit their peak in July, so their demand was 99.4. But actually, the Martin Center hit their peak in August, which was 105.6. So, how they calculate the ration, 8% of that, and how they're billed, it would affect if they're billed by $472 per whole last year.
For the year, for the year, so probably better, which their total bill is...
Oh, I have 20 something.
Yeah, so, yeah, it's in 3%.
So, it's not a big impact, but there is an impact on some.
And we're, actually, I mean, you guys have heard us talk about tiny use rates. We've got that infrastructure installed. That is our goal. We've got a study performed. We're actually, just like you guys know, we're working on that budget, and we have some money in there for totes and assistance into making that transition. And we may look at changing some of the demand thresholds as well. Right now, we've got 2,500, 700, which is 25 KW. If you get 25 KW, we calculate to in a different class. If you get 100 KW, 25 KW, we think it's a little low, and you could barely exceed that. I mean, we've got probably more customers that work with that line than any other, but there's going to be some other rate things that we look at down the road. This is just going to get us to where we kind of match what the pool's doing at this point, so. And two reeves, like I said, we don't need two reeves tonight. It's not going to go into effect until October, so we want to give you guys plenty of time to ask questions and play public as well, so.
Any other questions for Mr. Burksden, council?
Are other cities in the pool doing something similar, Jeff?
Yeah. Actually, with the software we have, or have, we were one of the few that was able to do the one CP. Most of them had one CP in one month. Most of them looked at the whole thing. We did that because, again, that's how we were being billed this time, so we made that change. So, I don't know that anybody went to what we had in here before, these changes. I think we were the only ones that probably did that. I think we're probably going back to what everybody else is currently doing, if it wasn't.
Got you. Have a motion and a second, please?
We don't have a motion.
Need a motion and a second to approve, please?
Moved to approve.
Second.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve. Ms. Lewis, could I get a roll call, please?
Brandt.
Yes.
Benitez.
Yes.
Leon Thompson.
Yes.
Reader.
Yes.
Green.
Yes.
Ashford.
Yes.
Guthrie.
Yes.
Craig Thompson.
Yes. Thank you, Jeff, for the explanation. Appreciate it. Ms. Lewis, could I get you to read ordinance number four by title only, please?
An ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor of the City of Marshall, Missouri to execute a contract between the City of Marshall, Missouri and Butch Viles for the transfer of certain real property in the City of Marshall.
I'd ask for a motion and a second to approve, please.
Moved to approve.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Could I get a roll call, please, Ms. Lewis?
Leon Thompson.
Yes.
Reader.
Yes.
Green.
Yes.
Ashford.
Yes.
Guthrie.
Yes.
Craig Thompson.
Yes.
Brandt.
Yes.
Benitez.
Yes.
And Ms. Lewis, could I get you to read ordinance number five by title only, please? An ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor of the City of Marshall, Missouri to execute a contract between the City of Marshall, Missouri and Tiffany Thomas for the transfer of certain real property in the City of Marshall.
Ask for a motion and a second to approve first reading, please.
So moved, Your Honor.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Could I get a roll call, please, Ms. Lewis?
Green.
Yes.
Ashford.
Yes.
Guthrie.
Yes.
Craig Thompson.
Yes.
Brandt.
Yes.
Benitez.
Yes.
Leon Thompson.
Yes.
Reader.
Yes.
And Ms. Lewis, could I get you to read the appropriations by title only, please?
An ordinance making the appropriation for the payment of accounts out of the different city funds.
I'd ask for a motion and a second. Motion and a second, take us to a second reading, please.
Moved to approve.
For a second.
For the second reading.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to take the ordinance to a second reading. Could I get a roll call, please?
Ashford.
Yes.
Guthrie.
Yes.
Craig Thompson.
Yes.
Brandt.
Yes.
Benitez.
Yes.
Leon Thompson.
Yes.
Reader.
Yes.
Green.
Yes.
An ordinance making the appropriation for the payment of accounts out of the different city funds.
I'd ask for a motion and a second to approve the second reading of the appropriations ordinance, please.
So moved, Your Honor.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Could I get a roll call, please, Ms. Lewis?
Guthrie.
Yes.
Craig Thompson.
Yes.
Brandt.
Yes.
Benitez.
Yes.
Leon Thompson.
Yes.
Reader.
Yes.
Green.
Yes.
Ashford.
Yes.
We have any other council business tonight, councilman?
I got one thing. Ms. Lewis, let me know that the Loggers Pension Annual Convention is coming up sometime in September, isn't it?
It's the end of October.
End of October. Loggers handles the employee pension program that we are participating in. They have an annual meeting where they talk about the funding, this and that. I went to it for three years, four years. Julie's gone the last two years. If anybody's interested in going, get with me. I went many years and it was the same thing over and over again, and they are, it's a fantastic pension plan, very well-funded, very well-structured. I felt like myself that it was probably no advantage for Julie to be going to this because she's the one that works it and deals with it day-to-day, and I got comfortable with how well it was. If anybody's interested in going, get with me.
it was. If anybody's interested in going, get with me. If you're not, we may just send Julie in.
Thank you, Councilman Brandt. Any other business gentleman?
The only other thing I have is I spoke with J.D. about looking at some sidewalks, specifically when you're crossing from College Street, or when you're walking down college and you cross Miami, there's a section there that we did a nice sidewalk on Miami, we did a nice sidewalk on College, and there's nothing there at that Miami College by the old McDonald's station. We need to take a look at getting that fixed. I looked at the budget. There's about $66,000 sitting in funds that we could use to try to take a look at getting at least that section finished up and then possibly looking at some sidewalks going down College as well, all the way to possibly break time. So, we're going to start looking at that, Your Honor.
Appreciate it, Mr. Thompson. Counselperson, anybody else?
Want to remind everybody to use your buttons and speak into the microphones because there's people that are watching the live stream that couldn't hear a lot of what was being said.
Thank you, sir. And again, remind everybody, vote tomorrow. Get out and do your diligence and elect some new county officials. I'd entertain a motion to adjourn in a second, please.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Ms. Lewis, could I get a roll call, please?
Craig Thompson.
Yes.
Brandt.
Yes.
Benitez.
Yes.
Leon Thompson.
Yes.
Reader.
Yes.
Green.
Yes.
Ashford.
Yes.
Guthrie.
Yes.
I appreciate everybody's attendance. All of you have a good evening, safe trip home.